Okay, Board Members and ladies and gentlemen, we're going to move on with the meeting now. We'll pick up with the items for consideration for our September sixteenth business meeting. The first item is Ms. Kelly Klutz will be here to give us the presentation on the budget adoption, keeping in mind these items, these next six or seven, eight items will be either going to the action or the consent agenda for next Monday night's meeting. And all I'll need from you tonight is if you have questions, that type of thing, and then give me your pleasure whether it goes action or consent. So with that being said, Ms. Klutz, you can take off with five point one. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to give you a brief history. In August, I came to you with the state highlights for the budget. I also came to you with a recommendation regarding the state budget, and I also came with a recommendation for our local budget. I also came to you and asked you for a general consensus so that I could continue and develop the budget resolution. You gave me consensus, and therefore I have brought you a budget resolution. At this point, I would like to entertain any questions if you have any, but you've had an opportunity to have your questions, and we've answered some privately. And so if there's any other questions, we'll take those at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. Board Members, do you have any questions? I'm not going to start on either end. If you have a question, let me know, and then we'll go right straight to you.
Yeah, I have one.
Okay, Mr. Walter.
We've spoken about it a little bit earlier, that this here is our main budget resolution. And being new, this is the first time we're approving, or this new board is approving a budget resolution. But we've been seeing these budget addendums every month, and they've got codes on them that kind of help us. I'd like to see this resolution, if possible, have the code on it to be able to refer back when we do make changes in the future, to know where that initially started from. That's, that would be my comment. I don't know how everyone else feels, but personally, I think that's easier for us and some other folks, public, to understand exactly where our money's moving around from. That was my comment. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Any other comments? On my right, any on my left?
I just have.
Okay, Mr. Schumaker.
Just touched, you and I talked a little bit. You know, the textbook funding and the structural supply, you had that number forty-five percent, fifty percent. Do you remember what the original number was that we were talking with those? Could you just send that to us in an email so that we could kind of know? Because I'd ask you if we could actually put it on this sheet, but you said it wasn't appropriate for this particular document.
That information was shared in great detail at our Budget Committee, and that information is also posted on our website under Budget Committee Information. So I can direct, I can give you the link to that information.
Oh, sorry. Okay, so that is actually the original allotment. How long, was that like several years ago, that this original allotment that you're talking about?
I believe it was two thousand and eight when we started cutting that budget.
Okay.
But I have all of that detail in the, posted on the website, that I'll provide the link for you.
Okay, that'd be great. That's it.
Schumaker, are there any other comments from the board? Mr. Phillips?
I have a comment, a question. I will vote for this. No's, but I want to see it go on the consensus budget, so this is the only time I have to comment on this budget. I am going to be watching very closely, I don't know about the rest of you, I'm going to be watching very closely what's happening in Union County, where their school board is taking on the county commissioners to get more money. Now, I know in a presentation you gave us earlier in this process, you showed that Union County gets more money, I don't know, almost a thousand dollars per student more, I believe, than we do from their local county, and yet they're going back and asking for even more. Some of you said that, you know, you're very happy with the amount of money that the commissioners have been able to give us, but I think that, you know, when you see a list that says that we've got twelve million dollars of roofing repair needs, and we get one million dollars, which isn't even enough to fix one roof, that is woefully inadequate. And I, for one, think that we need to start fighting a little bit harder to get the funds that are needed to have an adequate school system, not an extravagant, just an adequate one.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other comments? Ms. Carpenter, I think you made mention, you want to speak?
Yes. First of all, I would like this put on the action agenda. And I will make my comments, it's late in the evening, I'm not going to go into this. I will have my statements written. I can, I cannot agree with this, and I do, I will have suggestions and comments at that time. I won't go into it tonight.
Any questions that you can get answered between now and then, concerns that you have, I would ask that you try to get that done between now and then, so whenever we do discuss this, it will be a condensed list of questions and concerns.
Well, I've discussed some with Dr. Shepherd. I have made suggestions. I have said what I have to say. You know, we've had the, and I've said the two hundred thousand dollars, I would make suggestions. One of my biggest concerns is that we're not giving all our employees, you know, the commissioners only gave our employees, our teachers, an increase, did not give one thousand four hundred other employees a increase, gave teachers one point five percent increase. I have a real problem with not giving all our employees a raise. That really, really bothers me. I cannot, in good conscience, sit here and say, yes, and embrace our budget when it's like that. I just cannot do it with a good conscience. I cannot embrace something that lays off a hundred and something employees. No, I cannot, and I can point fingers all day to Raleigh, I can point fingers all day to my commissioners, and as he mentioned, Union County, they did sue their commissioners, and I have sat on the other end of that finger before and been sued by a school board. I was a county commissioner one time, and I got sued by a school board, so I know what that's like. But I cannot sit here in good conscience and say that I can approve the budget.
Well, that's fine, Ms. Carpenter, and also, when you're talking about, if you remember, I was on the board.
That sued you.
That sued you, us. Us sued you. I was on the board.
And you sued me.
And now we're all working together.
You sued me. Thank you.
But the thing, you know, and we're not going to elaborate, I mean, it's done deal, action agenda for next week, mixed sluts, no problem. But what you're saying is the same thing, it's no different than what Mr. Phillips is saying, except you're talking about, he's talking about capital needs, and you're talking about operational needs, but it is what it is, and we're not going to be able to change that anytime soon. It's going to be up to the county commissioners to do that. This board can't make that change, but I think what Mr. Phillips said is a very accurate statement, and that is, we're probably, not only necessarily this board, but boards in the future, because of the way the structure is and the way the funding is and all that, is probably going to have to take a much stronger stand and be quite a bit more aggressive toward requests on funding. Because usually, you know, we say, this is what we need, and we somehow negotiate it, and this is what we get, and it's somewhere in between what we ask for and what they give us, it's somewhere in between that. But, you know, the general statutes requires that they give us the funding to run the schools effectively. And when we start losing ground, like we're losing as far as the capital needs and then operational needs, then, you know, there's definitely some issues there. But, you know, we'll have all that, and hopefully it'll get your answers to your questions between now and this week. But for right now, Ms. Klutz, we'll put it on the action agenda, and hopefully we'll be able to move through that next week.
Mr. Chair, can we clarify that, I believe we gave one point five percent raise to the teachers, I think it was a supplement increase, is that correct?
A supplement, a supplement.
It's a supplement, I was just...
Well, the people that wasn't getting raises, I mean, that wasn't getting supplements, the reason they didn't get an increase was because they wasn't getting a supplement, it was on supplements.
That's to keep us competitive.
And that's another thing that we've got to keep in mind, Ms. Carpenter, and that is, you've got to be able to distinguish capital needs is in this pot, and operations is in this pot, and you can't intermingle the two.
What Mrs. Carpenter is discussing is, all of our maintenance technicians, and I don't know what you call them.
Your maintenance people, I'll call them maintenance technicians.
They don't get supplements.
They got nothing.
They didn't get no supplements.
Their clerical got nothing.
They got the state increase.
The clerical, the custodians, the people that are down in the trenches did not get any reward whatsoever, yet the county employees got a one and a half percent raise. It's a crime, and in, I don't need to say anymore.
But the state didn't, the state, yeah, see, the state didn't pay the county employees, but see, the state does pay our school employees, and they got a one and a half percent increase, the state employees did. But since the county employees are not county employees, they didn't get no one and a half percent. The only one and a half percent they got was what the county gave them.
And that's what all of our maintenance people and our custodians are getting paid directly from the county?
Yeah, but that's county versus state. Say, yes, they got to keep...
No, 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 I'm saying they, our maintenance budget is purely local.
Right, exactly.
And our custodians are purely local, that is a...
Oh, I, okay, I understand what you're saying now.
Isn't that right?
I'm clear now.
Custodians are local.
Yeah.
Custodians are not purely local, there's a split...
Okay, it's just the maintenance guys that are local.
The maintenance guys are local.
Okay. The facilities management personnel.
Ladies and gentlemen. Are local.
Maintenance people.
Maintenance people.
Maintenance technicians, that's what I like.
The only comment I wanted to make, Mr. Chairman, and to Mr. Phillips, the million dollars that we referenced earlier, that, you're right, that didn't go very far, but that was a million that we were having to take out of operations and spend it on our technology lease. The total, and this isn't a great number either, but the total's five point two million, you know, that's what we get in capital and operations, but that's where that million dollar number came from earlier. But your point was well made, I just wanted to make sure we knew what...
Can I help you with a little bit with that?
Oh, sure.
It, a lot of this is cause, our funding is cause and effect. Several years ago, we used to get state public school funds from the corporate tax. When the state cut that out, and we no longer were funded for state public school funds, we already had a lease obligation of a million dollars in a technology lease. So because the state cut us, we were obligated a million dollars. The county was kind enough to say, take these capital funds that we've been giving you and pay for this obligation, this financial obligation that you have. It wasn't really a clerical error, and I understand what you're trying to say, but it was, it was a direct impact of the state cutting our budget and no longer having those funds available, so now we paid them in technology. Well, eventually, the county said, you know what, that's not our intent. We want you to have capital, projects, roofs, and that kinds of things, those kinds of things. So they've corrected that. So now we have both, a little bit of both. We have a little bit of technology and a little bit of capital.
Right, well, and then that's the point I was trying to make, that, to me, got cleaned up in the proper way. I didn't know, that was long before I got here, I think. I didn't know how it came about, I just knew we took a million dollars of the five, and it went over.
Technology.
To technology. And now we get, at least is what you just said, we still get some of that technology, and we've restored the capital to the five. Five point two.
This year, capital, we received a million twenty thousand.
What's the two point four, four two, eight six six? Capital outlay?
What page are you on?
On page six. Operational's two point eight, and capital outlay, two point four?
You also have the carryover funds of QSCB, so that's probably what you're looking at. So you have a million twenty thousand dollars of money that we spend, we received a million twenty thousand dollars last year, we received a million twenty thousand dollars this year, but capital is in that too, or QSCB is in that too.
Okay.
If it carried over.
Thank you, Ms. Klutz. It's going to go to the action agenda for next Monday night. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Okay, Board Members, we're going to move on, skip over five two to five point three. We got Dr. Louder coming to the podium to talk to us about the policy revisions, and you'll have, we'll do the first and second readings, but we'll call for action between the two, okay?
Good evening. We'll start with the first read, the policies for first read. They're very minor changes with both of those, and we know Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Harrison, were at our policy committee when we discussed these. We also, Dr. Van Hugle sent a summary today, an email to everyone with kind of what the changes with graduation requirements were, because those were essentially state updates, and that may have looked like a lot of changes, but those were essentially what the state told us to change. So they were very minor, and we'll certainly take your questions if you have any questions on either of those two. The second one, the tuition for discretionary admission, is essentially one statement change.
Okay, Board Members, do you have any question on these policy revisions on the first reading? As Dr. Louder said, you know, we've had time to converse and get our questions answered. Are we pretty good to go? Everybody okay with the consent on first reading? Okay? Consent on the first reading there?
And the second read policies, we did remove the community use policy because there were some, we talked about that at length at the last policy committee meeting. We did have some financial implications that Ms. Klutz wanted us to look at, so we'll be looking at that next week at the policy committee one more time before that comes up, so that one was removed. The other ones, we made the changes that you requested and are ready to move on unless you have questions.
Thank you, Dr. Louder. Board Members, do you have any questions on policy revisions on the second reading? Mr. Walter?
I'm okay with, I'm okay with all of them, except for seventeen forty, I'd like to see that on the action agenda, I don't like the way it's worded.
Okay. Are there any other comments or questions? Everybody good with the consent for the other items, except for seventeen forty?
I don't have a question about this, but on the use policy, where you pay for the facilities use, will that include fields?
Yes.
Especially if this thing progresses, then you'll have to revise the policy again on the turf.
Yeah, and Mr. Phillips had a couple of questions, and again, when we got those questions, and we looked at the chart with Ms. Klutz, we ultimately said, let's pull this and talk about it one more time, because we probably spent forty-five minutes on that or longer as a committee. We're going to review that one more time, and obviously, everything that happened tonight would be stuff that we can talk about at that meeting next week.
Okay, everybody with consent on all of these policy revisions, except for seventeen forty, we'll go to action. Is that right? Thank you, Dr. Louder. Okay, Board Members, we're going to move on to five point five. This is the Head Start findings. We got Dr. Tara Nethris here, and Tara, when you get ready, we're ready to go with this, and if we have questions, we'll try to address those.
All right, good evening. So I'm going to go over the Head Start monitoring review that we went through last March and share the findings with you, and then ask for your approval to put this on consent for the next meeting. Okay, so we're going to go over those pieces, and I want to share with you the strengths from the review, and then also some of the opportunities for improvement. The big piece of this are really our responses to the opportunities for improvement, and that's what I'm asking for request on. So you can see that the strengths from the team were the implementation of professional learning communities, that is a practice that we do in our Head Start classrooms, as well as in all of our elementary schools. Another strength is the analysis of the assessment data, the feedback that our administrators provide to our classroom observations, and then an ongoing review of anecdotal observations and assessments. So when the team came out in March, these are the things that we were commended for. Also, in every review, there are always some findings and opportunities for improvement. So I'm going to go over those with you and then talk about our response. The first finding was our process for Board of Education approval on policy council selection and the review of bylaws. So as the governing body for Head Start, we need to clarify some of those processes, and we'll talk about that a little bit this evening. We also need to look more closely at our verification for our families who have a lack of income, so I'll talk to you a little bit about our response to that, and then transportation and supervision. So the first opportunity for improvement that was found was the process for board approval on policy council selection. So with Head Start, the Board of Education is the governing body, and then there's also a policy council that is a piece that, it's another committee that really governs the work of Head Start. So one of the things that we need to make sure is happening, and we do this, Ms. Carpenter, you're there, Mr. Schu, you're often there, and Dr. Phillips, I think you were at the last policy council meeting, is to make sure that whenever we're talking about bylaws, or we're talking about the selection of policy council, that our board liaison is present. I think that's always been the case. The issue was that we weren't then bringing that back to the board for approval. So what you'll see in the next one is that we will share the bylaws and the selection of policy council members. Every spring, when I bring the Head Start application to the board, we'll just add the bylaws into that board meeting, so that way we're approving it on an annual basis, and that won't be an issue for us anymore. The issue was that it wasn't found in the board meeting notes from last spring, because it wasn't presented, and they couldn't find it from others. So we'll change that process, and you can see that as the last bullet. And then I did include on here and in the board docs, the bylaws for the policy council and the selection of policy councils, so I'm not going to read all of these to you because you've already seen them, but basically, the policy council is elected by the parents of the children who are in our Head Start program. So it needs to be fifty-one percent of the policy council are parents, and the other forty-nine percent are community representatives, and then this kind of talks you through that process. That hasn't changed. There were a couple of conversation points at the last policy council meeting, but this is the process that we use for that selection. Okay, so if you want the details, those are there. And then the other opportunity for improvement is about a verification of lack of income. So when our families come into the Head Start program, they fill out an application, and on that application, there are some income questions. If they have a lack of income, they need to be able to document that somehow, and we need to show that we have that documentation. So there are several steps that we were taking to address this. The first, obviously, whenever you have something found, is to review the current process and look at our forms to see if we're doing what we're asked to do. The other piece is to complete an audit of all of our files. So if they find something in one file, it's possible that there would be things in other files, so we completed that audit. And then the other piece is to complete an additional document. We met with our Head Start regional person, and she explained that we are going to have to have another document that verifies income eligibility, and then we'll train our staff on this form, which we're already starting to do. And then the other piece that we're adding into our processes is to complete a random file check twice a year. So we'll actually go through after the application process and double check that the forms have been filled out. So you can see an example of that verification of zero income status form. This is what we will be using, it'll be part of the application process. So if a family does not have a source of income, we actually need their signature and a staff member's signature to show that verification. So that's one of the requirements of all Head Start programs. And then finally, we needed to take a look at some of the transportation and supervision pieces and just update those with some of the newer Head Start guidelines, so you can see what we're doing for that. We first met with the Transportation Department to review the training processes. Every fall, and then as new substitute drivers and things come on, Janet Purser, our Head Start Director, meets with the Transportation Department to make sure that all of the training is done for bus drivers and substitute drivers. We went through all of our policies to make sure that those were in line. We did add a process for reporting. If for some reason a student were to remain on a bus, even if there's an adult on the bus, we want to make sure that that's being reported to our Transportation Office and potentially to HR if there are any issues. And then a couple of additional pieces that we're putting into place, just as safety checks, are that we're going to conduct random bus walks on a monthly basis after children are dropped off. So every month or so, Janet, our Head Start Director, will get on the bus, double check, right? All of our drivers are required to walk to the back of the bus and make sure there are no children, but we want to be able to show that we are also double checking that. And then bus drivers do complete a daily checklist, especially for our pre-K students, as students get on the bus, marking off that they're on the bus, and then when they exit the bus, marking that child by name, so that we have that documentation. So those were the findings and our response. I will take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Tara, for your response to us on these deficits here that we've got, and it looks like that you've got a pretty good plan in place that's going to address all of these deficiencies, and I'd like to give the board opportunity to ask questions and that type thing. And so we'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side, since we started on Mr. Phillips' side last time.
Okay. Thank you for your report. Overall, you had these findings, and just from discussions with other board members, they felt like this was a difficult audit. What is your, what is your impression about this audit?
I feel like the findings that we had were findings that we can easily address. I think that it was intense. I think that often, federal audits are very intense, they only happen every three years, they have very specific checklists that they go through. I think that the biggest thing for me, from learning through that process, is to make sure that our policy council members and our board members are really informed about the work that's going on with Head Start. I think it had a similar level of intensity to most other federal audits.
How does this compare to, because you have a Head Start audit every year, is that...
This is every three years.
So this is a three-year audit? Okay.
And this is when they come and they check everything that we're doing. I mean, they review all of our files, they look, so it is very intense, and it is typical that there will be a couple of findings based on who the folks are coming out to do the monitoring, but there are typically things like this that come up in them that are quick checks for us, right? Like making sure, in the spring, I bring to you the selection of policy council members. So there wasn't anything in here, to me, that was a major safety concern or programming concern, they were things that we just need to do some double checking of.
So in summary, these were not overall major gaps? These were just small findings, adjustments to your policies and procedures?
Yes, and we met with our regional consultant the middle of August, and she came in for two days, because they always send someone out after a monitoring visit, and by the end of those two days, we had addressed all of the concerns that they had. They will come back out, and they'll do a follow-up monitoring visit, and I would say that we are well-prepared for that visit.
Just for my edification, when you do verifications, how do you verify? Do you have to go to each of the stated places, or how do you know that they're truthful?
We don't. So when families come in, and they let us know that they don't have an income, it isn't our role to investigate, it's simply our role to document. And we were documenting, we just weren't documenting it on the specific form that they wanted to see. So we had a different process in place, but they wanted something more specific, and you can see from the form that I showed earlier that it is much more specific, and the families have to write a statement, and that is the same statement that we'll use for our NC pre-K programs as well, because that's now a requirement for those programs as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. Ms. Carpenter, you are liaison, you have any comments or questions?
Well, we actually made up the form. We didn't, we were using a check mark saying, no, they have no income, and they didn't like our little check mark saying, nope, no income. So we made up a form to say, yep, this is a form. So we made it up ourselves. We made up one. We made our own form. But no, we had a little thing saying, no, they don't have, they have no income. But one of the questions, this is in addition, on the policy council, and this was basically just a time lapse. You were getting ready to bring us the application at our April meeting, wasn't it, and they came in May, I mean, they came in March.
They were here in March.
In March, and you were coming to our April meeting, where we would have approved it, and you would have had the documentation, but we had not approved it. So there was just a little lapse there, and we would have had it on our record, being approved, and she would have had the documentation. But the question I have is, on the policy council now, will, they, they actually elect them, the parents elect the policy council. Now, will we, after the parents elect the policy council, will that list then come to us, and we will approve that list then? I think it would be prudent for that to come to us, just as a double check, so if there is any question asked, to say that we have approved it. So it is on our record that we have approved it.
So currently, the way this is set up, and the way it was set up at the last policy council meeting, if you look at number five, and this is really important to your point, the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education cedes its authority to the policy council parent members to elect the community representatives to the policy council. So the conversation was around, does the Board of Education approve the process for selection?
Okay.
Or does the Board of Education actually approve the members? And the recommendation was that the Board of Education approves the process, not the actual members, and there were multiple reasons for that, that Janet shared with me, that I can go back and share with you.
But, I mean, I just want to make sure, because they seem to, I mean, during this process, this, I've been through, I've probably been through at least three of these audits, maybe four, but at least three, and this one was a very, Lynn was with me on this one. Lynn was with me on this one. It's, to me, it seemed a little bit tougher than some of the other ones on detail, more detail-oriented than most. And that's why I would rather be safe than sorry. When we started a lot of these procedures, making sure things were approved, maybe going a little bit more so, because they do seem to be more detailed. And this time, going back to, well, one of our records was back to AD, I mean, really going back really far. I would rather be safe than sorry. But now, if you don't think that's necessary for us to have this parent council and approve it, I mean, I have no problem with that.
It is necessary that you approve the process. It isn't necessary that you approve the folks who are all in the policy council.
And we're approving the process when you bring that application to us. But what if we run into the same problem? Like, they come in March again, and we've not approved it. Could you not pull that prior year and say, "Well, they approved it that prior year"? That's where I would go, say, "Hey, they approved it last year. We've not changed that process." Would that not have been valid?
That would have been valid, yes. And I believe they looked at the prior year, and it hadn't been brought to the board that prior year. So that, it was specific to the selection of policy council members. So it wasn't about the application. It wasn't about policy council. It was specific to this selection for policy council members. So what we're doing this evening, too, is through my presenting this to you, it will now be approved if it goes to consent next week. And then once that approval is there, then we'll have it on record for September of this year, and then we'll have it again in April when I bring the application. So that should never happen again, because we'll have it from here forward.
On record unless we change it? Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I make this motion. Yes. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes. We want it before they come back for the debt check.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I'm assuming you're on consent for the ...
I'm definitely on consent.
Okay. All right. Mr. Kager.
All right. Well, I'm action. I'm, I'm, I think every time we've had a Head Start presentation, I've probably said some negative things. I'm a skeptic of the program in general. And I get even more skeptical when I hear that we have a federal agent, a federal-level type person here at the local level, and our people are nervous about the way it went. That just, that just, I just get very skeptical when I, when I hear that. I don't, I don't want to discount the hard work that you're doing at the ground level of trying to run a program that you've been given, is in your charge. But I guess maybe part of it, I'll, I'll take some of the blame for ignorance in that maybe I don't fully understand what this policy council does, but it's parents that we are ceding authority to based on an audit. There's just a lot there that makes me a little uncomfortable. And maybe this is all we've ever, you know, this is what we've done before. But I'll tell you, yeah, but that is different. I, we haven't approved this before since I've been here. This is my third year. Well, that, wasn't that one of the things in the audit? They said we, our board wasn't active enough in approving? There was something that we got called out on that we were not approving.
It was the approval of bylaws. It was the approval of the bylaws for the policy council. And a subset of the bylaws for the policy council is how we select the policy council. So you do have the option, if you want to change the way we select policy council members, as a board, you have the option to say, "We don't want to do number five. We want to do what Ms. Carpenter suggested, and we don't want to cede our authority. We want to be able to choose those people." But just know that that opens up another, lots of other considerations. So when you look at Head Start, the way Head Start works is that you have to have a governing body. So you all are the governing body for our Head Start program. Then we need folks who can run kind of the day-to-day, make decisions about some of the programming needs and other things that we need for Head Start. That's the policy council. So because Head Start programs, the same way we run our elementary schools, where we have a Board of Education, right? And then within our schools, we have a school improvement team. And that school improvement team makes the decisions about what are the goals going to be, what are our action steps? The policy council serves in a similar light. So we have a governing body for Head Start, and then we have a team of individuals who make some of those more specific decisions for programming and things. So those things could come to the board, and we do a monthly report, right, to you so that you can see what's happening with Head Start. But the other option is all of these things every month would come to you instead of the policy council. So what I'm asking for approval from, from you is that you approve the bylaws for the policy council and then our selection. So all you're approving even next week for consent is our response to this audit. And we have to have a response to the audit, and we have to have the governing body's approval to do that. So what you're really approving through consent are our response to the process for Board of Education approval. So our response to that ...
Which, which screen are you on?
I'm on the very first, second slide. So ignore the title slide and go to the second one.
Okay.
So what I'm asking for tonight really is our response to the process for Board of Education approval. So what we're going to do differently for that is put it on the Board of Education meetings every April when we do the application, right? And make sure that whether it's Ms. Carpenter or Mr. Schu or Dr. Phillips, that there is a board member liaison present at all of those policy council meetings. So that's where the voice of the board is heard, because there are board liaisons on that policy council.
But they're non-voting?
They're not voting.
So my next question is, what are they, and again, I apologize if I'm not clearly understanding this, but what are they voting on? That we're, we're ceding, well, however we set it up, and we're non-voting, but what, what are they voting on?
It depends. And I could get a list from the last and show you the agendas from the last policy council meetings, or Ms. Carpenter or Mr. Schu could probably talk to you about that.
We always get a copy of the agendas. Y'all get a copy of this.
In the monthly reports.
You get them every month. Every time we have one, we get a copy of them.
Well, clearly, I haven't been paying attention when that's come to my email.
Well, you get one, and we approve it, because we approve them every, every time we get them. They are put on our agendas.
So, but we're not doing anything different than what we've done previously. We're going to get one report, sounds like in the spring.
Once a month. Well, but you get, you get the monthly reports from the policy council.
But not, we're not going to have it at a board meeting?
No.
That's what I'm getting at, when I say we're only going to get that yearly. Okay.
That's what comes to the board, because that's the Head Start application, and that will also include the bylaws and things for policy council, to make sure that we're really explicit in how we share that. But as the governing body, you have the option at any time to say, "I've got this question about the Head Start program, and this is what we're looking at." So what we're looking at for this specific piece tonight is the, "Are we okay with the response to the monitoring review?" So that's the process for board approval, right? So one of that is the points tonight about how we select policy council, including that verification of lack-of-income form. That's what you would be approving. And then the transportation and supervision changes around training bus drivers and doing the checklist and things.
Now, is this, this transportation, does this fall, is this separate from our other transportation? Head Start, because it has their own buses that, that are labeled, they're yellow, but they say Head Start. But when we say the transportation supervision, that's, is that different from our other larger department that's doing that?
They have more specific guidelines. So we work with our Transportation Department, but because we're transporting pre-K students, they have different guidelines. So there has to be a monitor on the bus. They do have to go through this process of doing checklists for when students are getting on the bus, getting off the bus. So it's still under our Transportation Department. We just have more specific guidelines to follow, which is why we do the bus driver training and things at the beginning of the year and then as folks are hired. So it's the same. It's just more specific for our little folks.
Okay. Gotcha.
You still want action agenda?
No, that, that's fine. There's, there's certain things there. I don't, I don't want to drag it out all night. I mean, this looks like what we need to do to have a proper response. But I just, I mean, for the last couple of months, we've, we've heard how this was a rough audit. And, and I just, that just raises my skepticism when I hear that coming from a federal agent that's spending billions and billions of dollars that they don't have.
Well, I never, I was part of the audit. I never really understood why we had federal agents. If I'm not mistaken, Carolyn, you correct me, but wasn't, didn't they say they lived in Mexico? Didn't they say they lived in Mexico? As I ask about that, and I'm saying, "How can you live in Mexico and, you know, unless they were living there and citizens?" But anyway, that's here and there. It was an intensive audit. It was.
It was, it was. One of the things, though, and I do, we do get monthly reports that come on our agenda whenever we have one, and that we do approve that.
Well, I'll be looking for that email. Evidently, I'm missing that one.
Ask me questions, right? As it comes, just ask me whatever you'd like to know, and we'll answer them.
I guess that's the one thing you got to be careful when you start asking questions. You tell everybody what you haven't read.
Yeah, because we do get them whenever we have meetings, because I give them dialing, and we put them, and we approve them.
Yeah. Well, we don't, the, the major significance between Head Start and the traditional K-12 is that it's federally funded. And when you got federal funds, they tell you when to jump, how high to jump, where to jump, how to get back, and how to get up and down and all that. And that's just the way it is. I'm not, by no means anti-government. I love my country. But I'm telling you, though, if, my old pastor told me one time, "If the government puts a dollar in it, they're going to tell you what to do." And they're the one that funds this, and so therefore, they tell us how high to jump and when to. So, but that's just the difference in the funding. And I don't think we were ever in any kind of jeopardy whatsoever of losing our funding for Head Start. Never. These were deficiencies. We have deficiencies of some sort every time they do an audit, and we deal with them. Hopefully, we don't have them twice. Mr. Walters?
How many children do we have in our Head Start program?
176.
How many parents are on this policy council?
We have to have at least six parents, I believe. And then 51% of the policy council is made up of parents, and the other 49% can be made up of community members.
Have we already done that, or are we waiting to have a meeting of some sort that?
We will be electing those folks within the next couple of weeks. So we had a policy council meeting about two to three weeks ago to talk about the findings from the audit and talk about the processes in place. And then once the children are enrolled, then we go through the process, because policy council is elected every year.
So they're only on there for one year?
Yes. And they can serve up to three one-year terms.
But their children, if they have another child?
Mm-hmm. And then if they do not have children who are still in the program, they may serve as a community member if they want to continue to serve on the policy council.
And how many of those do we have?
I'm sorry?
Do we have those lined up already?
I think we have two right now, who are former parents who are serving as community members.
Is there anybody else's community members, community members as well? Is that ...
We do. We have other folks from local businesses. I can get you the list. We can put that in the next monthly report.
Sure. My other, the only other question was, is this a reinspection by the same people?
It will be different.
So they may find something completely different? Or are they just looking at these three items or whatever they are?
They will be coming back and seeing what our response has been to the three items that we've addressed here.
But it's not a complete reinspection?
It is not a complete full monitoring visit, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Harrison?
I absolutely believe that Head Start children are the poorest of the poor and are absolutely I do wonder about the adequacy of the form here that leads them to the statement that they have no income. And I did hear your response to Mr. Schumaker earlier, that we do not verify income, but we collect documentation that is a statement of lack of income. I guess my question is, does anybody verify income?
Not for this program, no.
Which begs the question, why do we have a form that says there is no income?
Because if a family comes in and they're filling out the applications and they state that they do not have an income, we are required by the program guidelines to document that. What we are not required to do is to investigate that statement.
But you're also saying that no one investigates?
It is purely a documentation piece from our side, yes.
No one investigates income for Head Start?
Not from our side, no.
Well, from anyone.
Not that I'm aware of.
No one knocks on our door and asks to see the files about?
No.
Okay. Okay. I guess I'm, I'm for the action agenda as well. Or were you still for the action?
I, I acquiesced back to consent. I, I think I rattle off too much of our time anyway, and we'll, so.
Thank you.
Consent, Mr. Harrison?
So we, we have parents in there that do have income, correct?
Yes. These are only, this is only filled out if they come in and they say, "I do not have an income."
And if they have income, they're required to produce a copy of their last income tax statement or examples of their W-2 forms or whatever it is that they get from their employer to show what that income is, I believe.
I will have to go back and look to see specifically what the guidelines are, but it's really to help determine applications. So there is some documentation for that, yes. But if I'm a family and I have no income, I have nothing to bring to show.
Yeah, there's nothing to bring.
I mean, there's nothing.
That's right. So this new form was to show that, okay, well, at least we have something. I mean, for the others, we may have a copy of their 1040 EZ from 2012, and, or we have, you know, the latest monthly paycheck that they got. But if they say zero income, how do you prove zero income?
We can't, other than this form. And that was the question we asked. Other than our checkmark, what else would we do to show?
Yeah. So at least we're making somebody put their ...
They didn't like our checkmark.
I honestly believe the answer still is that no one does. Yes, we can't, we don't. But no one does.
And that's not ...
The Senator wants to go down that trail.
That's our view, I understand. But just the same, there's, there's no verification.
That's the, you got to talk to the federal government about that.
Are we doing enough to make sure there is not fraud? Are we doing enough to make sure there is, hopefully, no fraud?
We are doing what we are required to do, yes.
We, we are not.
That is all we can do.
That's a fair answer. That is a fair, true answer. I appreciate that.
We are not, we are not a law enforcement agency. We are not the IRS. We are not the Immigration Service. We have enough things to do, and we have too little budget to do it. So, but the one question I did have was, when you came in March, I guess, or maybe it was April, you had said that, you know, we have 170 students or whatever, but we had applications for twice that, something like that?
Mm-hmm.
And so the question was, well, we've got space. Could we handle more? And there was going to be an investigation to see if that was a possibility, but I'm guessing the answer was no.
We've responded to that a bit, but it's a funding issue. We need approximately, I don't remember what the exact number was, but somewhere over $100,000 to open a new classroom. So we have a limited amount of funding, and until that funding becomes available, we wouldn't be able to expand the program.
But I guess the question was, what, what's the process for even, is there a process for even asking the federal government?
Yes. And we did go back and we asked, and we're basically told, "Why are you asking for funding when sequestration is happening and everything else is going on?" And so our response to that was, well, potentially, as districts lose particular amounts of funding, they may decide they no longer wish to have a Head Start program, and then we would be happy to take their funding. So if that occurs, we do, we have been working with our consultants and let them know that we are interested in expanding the program in case funds are available. That was actually the first step we took after the board meeting in April to see if that was an option. And we're basically told with sequestration, that is not an option at this time. But we'll keep going back to them every year when we do the application and keep asking for more funding and at some point, it might become available.
Mr. Phillips, you clear now? Everybody clear? All right, one last call. Is everybody good for consent?
Yes.
Everybody's good for consent? David? Okay. Tara, we'll go to consent agenda for the sixteenth.
Thank you.
Thank you for your report to us and your response and we'll get this taken care of next week.
Thanks.
Okay. The next item we have, board members, is five point six. It's the J. Robinson Field House. And I'd like to, I talked to Dr. Shepherd and I've talked to Mr. Wiki and I'd like to preface this before Mr. Wiki starts and give you some ideas of what I've been thinking about. And then, you know, we can kick this around and the boards can decide what they want to do. But basically, between the one-time county funds, three hundred thousand dollars, the board approved thirty thousand dollars here a few months ago, and the parent donations, they had fifty-three thousand. So, they had a total of like three hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars total. And thirty-eight thousand, they've already spent for architects and different things like that. So, it's left them three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars that they have to deal with. And the question before us tonight is, the bids that Mr. Wiki's gonna be talking to us about here just in a minute or two, is the bids, the low bid, contingencies, government fees and all of that's gonna come up with about four hundred and thirty thousand, which is gonna leave us like an eighty-five thousand dollar deficit. Now, what I talked to Mr. Wiki about and what I've talked to Dr. Shepherd about, and I'm just gonna preface this and then I don't want to take your presentation by no means because I want you to do what you need to do here, but I want to give the boards some time to be thinking while you're doing this on how we're gonna take action on this tonight. Now, the way that I looked at it, and whenever we get into the discussion part, board members, if you have a suggestion, a different idea or some other kind of a comment, we want to hear from you on this. But what I was thinking was that we've got basically three options here. We've got three options. And one of the options is, is that we obviously don't have eighty-five thousand dollars to just lay out to this particular item here. I don't know where we would find eighty-five thousand. So, that's one option. Number two option would be, if you were building a house and you had two hundred thousand dollars set aside as your budget and your house came in at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you'd have a choice to cut back to two hundred thousand or try to find a way to get fifty thousand more so you could get what you wanted, two hundred and fifty thousand. Well, that's no different in school board stuff, no different in stadiums or field houses or anything. So, what I would say would be, one option would be, what the proposal is for the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars is a four thousand square foot stadium, I mean, field house. And it's just a little over a hundred dollars a square foot, so that's where the four hundred and thirty came from. And since we've only got just a little bit shy of three hundred and fifty thousand, my recommendation would be, or one of the options would be, that we just reduce the scope of work. Instead of doing a fifty by eighty, fifty-foot by eighty-foot building, which would be the four thousand square feet, what we would consider doing is saying, "Look, you know, you've got three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. You need to stay within your means and so you can reduce the scope of your work from fifty by eighty to a forty-seven by seventy-five, thereabouts. You're losing a little bit of footage on this side and you're losing a little bit of footage on the length of the building, but you're reducing your scope down to thirty-five hundred square feet, which will put you at about three hundred and fifty, three hundred and sixty thousand dollars, which was then with just a few thousand dollars of what we have budgeted." So, that's an option that we need to look at. And then, the other option would be that we ask the boosters to belly up, you know, and do some more fundraising. And keep in mind, you know, if we do reduce the scope, and Mr. Wiki said he would check on this between now and the sixteenth with the architects and the people that made this proposal. And, but see, you can always add on. I mean, if we give them thirty-five hundred square feet, they get what they want, they get the field house, it's one less item for the board to deal with, one less item for Mr. Wiki to take off of his list, and they get the field house. And as they raise funds to outfit the thirty, the three thousand square feet that's gonna be set down for no telling how long till they raise enough money to outfit it, and they'll have, but they'll have the thirty-five hundred square foot facility. They can raise money for all that they want to do. If they want to add to it, they can add to it at some point. But that's all I've got to say about it. Now, Mr. Wiki can say whatever he's got to say on it and they will discuss it and then we'll try to give him some direction for the sixteenth. But either way, it's gonna probably have to go to the action agenda, okay? Mr. Wiki?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me just first say what you should have up on your screens is the bid tab from the bidding. As you see, two folks are pretty close, Holden and J. E. Dunn, which are both good contractors. And then, we got some folks as outliers at four forty-five and five hundred and sixteen thousand. The low bid, Holden, you know, we've done two projects with them already or we're in the process of doing two and we're very comfortable with their bid number of three ninety-eight. The difference between the two base bids is the base bid number one is for a very, very basic structure. It doesn't have any finishes to speak of inside what would be considered the locker room area. That's just a large stored space under this current base bid. The finished space is within the coaches locker room, office and meeting areas. There's a section of the building in front that would be finished area and air conditioned. So, that's the structure. Base number, base bid number two is a completely finished structure. And so, it's actually a good price, we think, for the four hundred and seventy-eight thousand, but obviously, a long way from what reality is. So, if you would, switch to the next one. I'd appreciate it. Nope, that one. Yep, thank you. So, what I did was I just sort of laid it out as the chairman was explaining. And with the three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars available, we have a budget shortfall in the construction area of fifty, just over fifty-two thousand dollars. And then, if you add to that what I call soft costs, which are design fees, contingency and keep going down a little bit further on that. Thank you. There we go. Administrative, the design fees for the C.A. work, I'm sorry, construction administration work, the construction material testing that has to be done in the field per the code and the construction contingency, we're looking at roughly a shortfall of just under eighty-five thousand dollars. I don't have any problem looking at reductions. I've talked briefly with the contractor. We only got the bids last Thursday afternoon, so we didn't have a lot of time to talk. We've suggested that they look at possible value engineering items for us. They're doing that right now. I think in the next four or five days between now and the next meeting, we can come back with some ideas in terms of what possibilities they have in terms of savings. I guess I certainly don't have any problem with the idea of reducing the size of the building if that's the absolute necessary requirement to get within budget. My concern is doing that without taking advantage of possible value engineering. So, and I don't, I don't think there's a lot there in value engineering, but at least we should hear them out. So, what I'd like to do is just be given the flexibility to work with the contractor and see what we can come up with, with ideas and bring back those recommendations to you on the sixteenth.
That sounds good. Like you say though, I don't know where there'd be any value engineering on that because you're basically looking at four walls other than those offices. And so, I don't know where some value engineering could come in, but that would be something that you have to work out with them, trying to, knowing that the number one goal is, is to stay within the allotted budget.
Yes, sir.
That's the goal, stay within the budget. And we have to do whatever we have to do to do that.
Agreed.
All right, I'd like to give the board members a chance to ask you some questions or make some recommendations or they may have different ideas than I did and I hope they do. So, we'll start on Mr. Phillips' side. If you've got any comments, questions, concerns, good ideas?
Well, one question I have is if, yeah, my reaction is that this is kind of a, not a half-baked project, it's a three-quarters baked project, but it's still, that's not a very good way to move forward. And so, I'm wondering, how long is this price valid?
It's valid for sixty days.
Sixty days. So, basically, the booster club, if we say, "Well, okay, you know, we'll accept this," but the booster clubs have got to come up with the eighty-five thousand dollar shortfall, they've got sixty days to do it?
Yes, sir.
That doesn't sound, I mean, that puts some type pressure on them, that's for sure.
It's probably, the price realistically would probably go up because the economy's sort of speeding up a little bit, so realistically, the bid would probably go up if it had to be rebid.
Well, for sixty days, it's locked in.
That's good, good. But after that, no, you never know.
No, that's correct.
Well, I mean, if the booster club can come up with the eighty-five thousand, then I'm willing to support this, but I mean, all along, this was not, this was not a top priority project when we've got that long list that you showed earlier of, yeah, in my mind, we need to take care of the things we have first before we start building on additional buildings. And we've got a roof at J. M. Robinson that's leaking and now we're gonna spend four hundred thousand, instead of fixing that, we're gonna spend four hundred thousand dollars on a field house because some people went to the county commissioners and convinced them that that's what needed to be done.
Well, I will say, and unfortunately, Principal Hall was not here to speak to the issue, but I will speak a little bit for him. There was a real concern about the quality of air and the overall appropriateness of space inside the existing high school to house football teams and soccer teams. The space is extremely cramped. I don't deny that. I think the air quality is what it is. It's not, we've tried to improve it as best we can with the existing systems. It doesn't seem to be able to keep up. They really feel and, you know, they've made, obviously made the point to the commissioners that that's something needed to be done to address that issue. I think they've made an effort in raising these funds. What Mr. Hall was probably gonna tell you was that because he's been, his teams have now been moved to a different division of play, the likelihood of them getting significant gate proceeds is not good. And so, there, as, you know, you heard it from Central's point, you would have heard it from Robinson's point of view and that is, their money is being spent on a variety of other needs within the athletic department. They've done what they can and it's not to say that they wouldn't be able to do something here. I don't mean to put them in a position without them being represented, but I don't know that eighty-five thousand is realistic in that period of time.
Well, especially given they've only raised fifty-three thousand up to this point. And just to the health issue, I mean, if they only spend the three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, that just gets a building with a shell that doesn't address the overcrowding. They have to spend the four hundred some odd to get a usable building to allow them to use it truly as a locker room. So, until we figure out where that extra money's coming from, I just don't underst, I can't see the logic.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Between now and next week, keep in mind, you know, you'll be bringing us some more figures back between now and next week. Because like I say, it's going to the action agenda anyway. Mr. Harrison?
Well, we can't spend money we don't have. And if it has to be a thirty-five hundred square foot facility or a three thousand square foot facility, that's the only feasible option that we can, I presume, reasonably give to J. M. Robinson. I would like a whole loaf sometime myself and other times, I have to take a half loaf or have to take a hill. But that seems to be the only feasible option if the company making the bid would in effect honor at least the intent of its original bid with a smaller, in fact, profit margin or agreement to its advantage as well. But I'm not sure what else we could do other than approve a smaller square footage in order to fit within the budget.
I'm just asking you not make, not make that decision tonight. That's all. I'm just asking you not to make that decision tonight. Don't tie our hands and say it has to be this. Let us work with, that's what we do. Let us work with the contractor and the architect and come up with a recommendation to you on how we get this within price. That's what I'm asking.
And that's what we're asking, basically, you know?
Yeah, I realize it's, you don't want to prove it at the current cost and I fully understand that. We're just asking for a week to see what we can do to work with everyone. And, you know, if it has to be a full reduction in size, that's what we'll recommend. But if we can come up with some material changes or other ideas, we'd like that opportunity, so.
All of us up here certainly would like to make sure that a deal is worked out and that a field house is built and is as adequate as we can reasonably accomplish for J. M. Robinson, as long as the whole deal doesn't fall apart by changing these specifications.
We've spent nine months getting here, eight and a half, so it's...
We'll leave that in your capable hands, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Walter?
I see this is where one of our schools has its disadvantage for not having a large alumni base to raise some of these funds. I guess I don't understand quite how the gate receipts work. Would they, do they have the freedom to say, "Add another dollar or two to the gate to come up with some of these funds?" Or is that restricted or how's that work?
I'm not, I'm not the expert.
I know.
But I was gonna...
Can you?
Conference, that's, yeah, conference, that's the fee.
The conference sets the fee, so they're going to a different conference that's gonna change?
Mr. Walter, I can interject briefly. When that, when we talk about gate receipts and they're gonna get hurt, they're now at a conference with teams from Charlotte and historically speaking, those teams don't bring people to the games to pay the gate. Well, alumni, that's only half the way. We're talking about the visitor side. So, for the last three years while we played the Cabarrus County Conference, when Mount Pleasant plays Northwest, both sides traveled. Well, now Robinson's in the predicament that, and quite frankly, and I'm sorry to dominate this, but Central got burned on this because when they were still four A playing Charlotte schools, had lost students, were getting absolutely hammered on the field. So, their alumni weren't hardly showing up and nobody from Charlotte was coming. So, all of a sudden, their gates receipts went to the floor. So, when they say gate receipts, that's kind of what they're talking about. You're not drawing people to the games from the visiting team. And that's just, historically speaking, with the larger four A schools from Charlotte.
But we're allowed to use gate receipts, they're allowed to use gate receipts towards projects like this or what do the gate receipts go towards? Just the regular maintaining of the facility and that type of thing or is it?
The gate receipts actually go to help your program survive. You're paying for all of your expenses from referees, security and all of that. And when you're bringing a few dollars in, you're barely, you're having trouble meeting that. And the concern, I think I would echo what Mr. Kyger said, football is your sport that brings dollars into a school. So, when a school is struggling with their gate receipts already, their income's gonna be down for the year.
But then, we don't have the freedom to set what that gave, that's...
We do not.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Walter. Mr. Kyger?
Mr. Wiki, you asked for flexibility and I guess I'm here to, my opinion, we give you all the flexibility you want. You got it, some drawings, you got schematic designs. We have a number. We've got money that we chipped in. They were successful in getting the commissioners to chip in some money. I don't know what else we can do about it. You know, I mean, at that point in time, if they decide they want to lower the spec level or they want to lower the builder, whatever, have at it. I mean, to me, we've said we're okay with putting a structure on our site. Well, what that ends up being, we will have the final say, but getting there, it's kind of up to them. I think we will run into a little bit of problem. We've done more for a field house there than we've done anywhere other than Mount Pleasant. Mount Pleasant's the only one that got one built when the school got built. Northwest, Concord and Central used private funds and donations and the one at Central took ten years to raise the funds for. I don't know how long they've been going, but it's been a while. They used to have a big banner out in front of their school that's not there anymore, but, and then the decision was made for Robinson to not get one when it got built. I, you know, and then Cox Mill came along and Hickory Ridge came along and they didn't get them either. So, I'm a little wary of us going too far to try to get one there because then we're gonna be right back trying to figure out, well, what are we gonna do at Cox Mill and Hickory Ridge? And that's not a good spot for us to be. So, again, I thought the thirty thousand for us to help get it across the finish line after the commissioners made a commitment to it, that to me seemed like the right thing to do. They're a little bit short and I wish they weren't, but it kind of falls back on, they just gotta either go back to the commissioners and see if they, you know, come up with that or continue to fundraise. You know, I wish, I wish we could fund it. You know, we got two hundred and forty-seven million dollars worth of things that, hey, it'd be great if we fund, but we just, we can't do it. So, in my opinion, you've got the flexibility to go do what you think you need to do to move it forward.
In the planning of this school, since I was on the board during the time and Ms. Klutz, she was with, she was with us at that time with, Jean Jordan was here and I'm sure you're probably one of the only ones, Ms. Probst, that was here back then, so we're old. But anyway, if I'm not mistaken, this was an alternate for the J. Robinson High School. This was an alternate that we didn't have funded for. It's not like we forgot about it. It was on the list of alternates, but it was just an unfunded alternate is what it was, okay?
You don't have the money then, you don't have the money?
Now, let's hear what Ms. Klutz has to say because she was with us then.
We had to literally cut our local budget to be able to fund the opening of J. Robinson. We didn't get the funding that we needed. So, operationally, we were struggling. We were struggling on capital side. It was a very difficult year to get that school up and running. So, one of the things that certainly went first was that field house.
Field house, yeah. And that was a difficult time too between the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education. There was a lot of controversy there and so it was a lot going on during that period of time. But it was on the list though to have done. So, it's not like, I don't want the J. Robinson parents to think that we just totally neglected them because we did not. It was an alternate that was unfunded, okay? Thank you, Ms. Klutz, for your contribution.
Can I ask one other question and maybe, you know, we've gotten some email and from some of the Central people that were here tonight and they keep referencing, well, I've seen a couple of times where they're referencing that we're currently doing work seen a couple of times where they're referencing that we're currently doing work out at Concord's fieldhouse. But it's, we did the weight room and the vocational, we didn't do anything with the fieldhouse, as far as I know. Is that correct?
I mean, there's been some paint-up, fix-up, that kind of stuff, but no, nothing.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't think so. And the weight room and the vocational part was academic, so it qualified for QSCB, and a fieldhouse doesn't qualify.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you for your contribution, Mr. Kiger. Ms. Carpenter, you have some comments?
Basically, what I'm, my thing is on this, is, you know, they've got, I agree with Blake that we put in the thirty thousand. My thing is, this thing needs to, we gotta go with it. I mean, this thing has been going too long. This is what they got. Do what you can, but get off the pot. I mean, I am serious. You made a good comment tonight, that, talking about how costs are going up. They're not gonna go down. This is what you got, and make what you can with it. If you gotta reduce the building, you gotta cost value, you gotta do what you can, but it is not gonna get any better. Get it out of the ground. Let's go with it. And just get what you can for your money. And cause the longer you wait, and how long we've been piddling with this thing? We done told them a year and a half ago, go with it, guys. This is what you're gonna get. When the commissioners gave you the three-hundred thousand, when we gave you the thirty, let's go. So let's go, is the way I feel. And this is all we got. And that's the way I feel about, this is what we got. And if you want a brick builded, let's go with it. And that's, that's what I'm saying, because we don't have it. You saw our list, you know what our list is, and I say, go for it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Schumaker, you have comments, questions?
Will you value engineering it? It's in your hands, my friend. Come back with the best thing you can, and maybe they'll just decide to do away with their HVAC, just get some electrical service in there and bare-bones it to the max, and then maybe next year they'll have some money that they can pump into it to fix it up the way they want to.
Thank you, Mr. Schumaker. So, Ms. Wickie, you got your orders there, marching order, whatever you want to call it there. Instructions, I think it might be a better word. And so when we get together next Monday night, you can have some maybe different proposals for us to look at, and then we can hopefully be able to make a decision, because like Carolyn said, we need to get it, we need to get it moving.
Right.
And like I said in the beginning, you know, sometimes you can't get all that you need. You just get what you can get for what you got. And that's what we'll try to do. And so with that being said, it's gonna go to the action agenda for next week.
Right.
And let's go ahead and move on to our next item here, and this is also your item, and this is the one on the easement out at-
Yeah, none of them.
At Patriots Elementary. And so if you want to go ahead and go with that, then we'll discuss that pretty briefly and move on.
Yes, sir. And unfortunately, I don't believe anything that you're looking at in the way of attachments is really what I want you to see, because a lot of it is, you know, the, I don't know how to explain this, a lot of what is attached inadvertently are really documents from the previous easements. And I can put those on screen, but actually, I gave you a handout that you have, yes. And that actually is, thank you, is the actual location of the easement on the property. It's the red or pink easement that you see here. And what it's doing is, this is the development, and here's the school, here's Patriots Elementary School, and this is Holden Avenue, and we come in, kind of an S curve coming into the property. And our bus parking lot is here. And the original, in the original design of the site, we agreed to allow the developer to have an easement here for the same exact purpose. It was to connect from where we thought our sewer line was going to be to eventually where the developer might bring their sewer. As it turned out, all of that changed. We actually brought sewer line up from behind Griffin, C.C. Griffin, came up this pathway and ended it right here. It does, the building ties in at this location. And now what the developer is saying is, he's close enough, he'd like to go bore underneath our driveway and then run down parallel to the driveway to connect the city sewer. And so that's, that's the easement that they're asking for. They would vacate the green easement and use the pink or red easement to make that sewer as, and it is a sanitary line connection to serve the houses. It is phase one of what will ultimately be approximately eight-hundred-and-forty or eight-hundred-and-fifty homes. And it is a very large development, and the city has been planning this for years. We've been in agreement, we've worked with them. We wanted to give them the, that was originally our sewer. The city took it over because we did not want to maintain it. And, and we knew at some point, the, we didn't know it was gonna be Ryan Holmes, Ryan Holmes at the time. We were, we were dealing with Wells Fargo originally, but as it turns out, they've offered us, I think I said in here somewhere-
Thirty-one hundred.
Yeah, thirty-one hundred and eighty-eight dollars in payment for the use of the property. And it would be a permanent easement for the use of, or rather, for the implementation of sanitary sewer connection. So we, we are just offering this up to the board. I mean, it is normally something we would provide as being good neighbors. It is really, the way it worked out, initially, they were gonna come across Holden Avenue, they were gonna develop a different portion of their property and come across Holden and come down parallel. The only difference now is that they're going to bore underneath our, our main drive and then tie, tie in a little further down. So it's, it's basically what we've been talking to them about for three years, and this is the culmination of it. And I recommend that we approve it so we can be good neighbors.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Wickie. Board members, do you have any questions, comments, or concerns? We'll start on Mr. Schumaker's side.
Even though they, they want to reimburse us thirty-one hundred dollars, as a result of that thirty-one hundred dollars, the easement that we have that's going to be abandoned will come back to us, and the easement will be removed from our, from the map, and they won't have that. So we'll get two things out of this.
That's true. Yes, sir.
When I look at the picture, of course, I don't have a topo map here, but I'm assuming that it looks like there's a berm of some sort between the schools, and there's a tree line there. And when they put that sewer in, it's gonna cut down all the trees and kind of damage the berm in some way or form. Will they restore, how are they, how are they gonna restore the foliage and all once they've gone through there?
Actually, there, where they, unless they've changed it, and I'd have to see this at a larger, I'd like to see the engineering drawings, obviously, this is just the design. That was going to go in very, very close to the driveway. There's actually an electrical line that comes in that same path, and they were gonna be just to the other side of the electrical line.
So they might be closer to the white, to the white line that you see on the outside of the edge of the road, rather than actually in the red. You see how the, there's a faint white line on the-
Yes.
-left side, so they would actually be paralleling the S on there, really not probably in the red piece, if you-
Oh, I see. No, no, it'll be in the red. And actually, if they are taking down trees, you know, we'll, we'll ask for some of that to be replaced, as long as they, you have to understand, this, this is an extremely steep berm that they're cutting into, and I'm assuming they're gonna be at the base of it, because the berm between the two schools is quite substantial. And it is steep, so I do know this is gonna be a deep sewer. I don't know the total depth of it, but I was told that it would be a deep sewer, the way it was designed. So again, like I said, I don't have any of that, I don't have a profile on it or anything to share with you, so at this point.
But you said that their plan is to bore under the road, so we would never be impacted at all by that activity. And do you know what size this line's gonna be? The size of the line?
No, I don't.
Okay. That's all I have.
Dr. Shepherd, do you have a comment?
Lynn, have you looked at the possibility that with Patriots growing, the need to connect those two driveways possibly to give a second way out? And if so, would this affect that? Do we want to put something in the agreement? I'm just seeing those drives are being very close in comments, conversations with Phil Hall.
The difficulty is that when the city took over that portion of the sewer, they were pretty adamant about not driving over that sewer. It's fairly shallow where it comes across the top of the ridge, and, because we had, we had asked them about that. So currently, we have people walking between the schools all the time, but we don't have any, any driving traffic. I think that we could probably work something out with the city where we could cut over, in other words, I wouldn't follow the path that there, that's there right now. I'd probably cut directly over the easement, and in that case, protect that spot where we cross over the, you know, we could do that certainly if it's deep enough, and minimize the impact on the sewer. But I really, I was speaking to another board member this evening before the meeting and saying, you really better, gotta be pretty careful, because it's very, very steep at the moment, and to get a bus to go out that way, it'd be one thing to move a car across it, but to get a bus across it would really take some engineering. So, you know, we can certainly talk with the developer and the city about that again. I'd be happy to do that. But I do know that they were, and the other thing I was gonna say is, we can't come too far east and south of there, because we get into wetlands as well. So we've got some, some fairly tight restrictions on where, where we might be able to put it. But the long and the short of it is, it would be nice if we could get a connection, that's for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Ms. Carpenter, you have any questions, comments?
No.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Mr. Kiger?
I'm fine.
Okay, Mr. Walter?
A couple of things related. I think it is important that we can have a connection between the two schools. I don't like the fact that it's, they're only offering thirty-one hundred dollars and they're adding so many houses. They're gonna tear down all the trees to the north and east of the, the school now, so it's kind of a wooded school now, it won't be after they come through. If they're using all this land-moving equipment and putting in roads, they can certainly, you know, move over slightly and give us a connector to, between our two schools would be my suggestion or request.
Okay.
In the process of building those roads, when that time period comes, but.
We can certainly ask them about it. I mean, I think it's a fair question. I'm not sure, at one point, I was thinking about, you know, could they, could they move this small connector where they cross under? But I think that's going into, that's tying into this little dead-end area, that little turnaround. So I think the only thing will be, is if we can figure out a way, either above it or below it, to cut, I'm sorry, showing me the film, you know, if we can go around it this way or cross over this way.
I don't think you're gonna be able to go up across the top.
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, it is, you can ski down that.
Yeah.
It's a tremendous-
The topography of that hill is not really conducive.
Well, Mr. Wickie can look into it, you know, and work in, in the school district's best interest, you know.
And we do-
Thirty-one hundred dollars for the impact that they're gonna have on our school system is very, very small, I think, if they're coming out and doing a lot of earth-moving and stuff, they can help us out for some of our needs. Or make an eighty-five thousand dollar donation to Robinson or something.
Any other comments, Mr. Walter?
No.
Okay. Mr. Harrison?
No, sir, no comments.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I, Rob's same concern about the thirty-one hundred dollars. That won't even cover the time that you've already put into it, the time that Mark's gonna have to go to review it, the time that your people will have to spend going out to review to make sure that they've done what they've said they were going to do. You know, you need to figure out how much it really is gonna cost us just to manage this and say, that's the minimum. But the other comment I want to make is that Ryan Holmes, I am certain, was part of this fight to get rid of the adequate facilities fee. And that has cost this district about, I believe, nine million dollars. And so now they want us to play nice, after they've cost us that much money and they're gonna put in eight-hundred-and-fifty homes, they're gonna blow up this school district? I'm not, I'm not happy. Thirty-one hundred dollars doesn't cut it.
Yeah, I can share your sentiments there, Mr. Phillips, there's no doubt. I think what we probably need to do on this, Mr. Wickie, is put it on the action agenda. I think it needs to go on to action, and I think that we need to talk with them about these issues that the board has raised, what they're wanting to pay us fifty percent, and you think, what they're gonna be charging for the lots, that they're gonna develop because of us giving them, giving them this. It's pretty much, truthfully, it's, I don't want to use the words "time thinking," because it probably wouldn't come out politically correct. But anyway, I think that we need to just talk to them a little bit more about that, and they need to ante up a little bit more on it because of the impact it's gonna have on our property. Whether we can get the driveway in there or not, I don't know. But taking the trees out and all that stuff, you know, so they can build more houses to explode our schools, it's gonna be crowded already anyway, then they need to sort of look at that, look at our impact. So unless the board has a better idea, I'd like to see it just go on the action agenda, and we'll look for some, maybe some better numbers and stuff next week.
All right.
Is that pretty much bill with everybody?
That's fine. And I can't remember now, you know, the DOT specs on their connect, their collector road. So maybe it's, you know, I don't know how far they are away, and I don't remember what that turns into, but it may be worth looking at.
It wasn't my drawing.
Anyway, just ask the question, you know, how do we get, and it may be that we have to go that way, you know? To go toward, you know, they, we get an easement, an access easement-
Oh, okay.
-back to their collector road.
Yeah.
Yeah, but there again, I don't know what the DOT specs on that for our buses are.
Right.
I just don't remember all the time.
It is a pretty steep-
We just need to make sure our basis is covered and we don't shortcut ourselves, you know, to help them hurt us.
Right.
In other words. So I think that's all then. So if you'll do that for us between now and next Monday night, hopefully, we'll be able to come to some kind of conclusion.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Wickie, for all your work. I know it's difficult, but you do a fine job. We thank you for it. Board members, we've got one last topic here, and this is one that Ms. Carpenter has attended various training issues, and also Mr. Harrison has attended a training that needs to, we need to send in the hours to the North Carolina School Board Association. And does anybody have any comments or questions about this?
May I please ask that my hours be amended to two hours instead of four hours?
You're supposed to get two hours instead of four?
I would prefer mine to be for two hours rather than four hours.
I'm having a hard time hearing you, Mr. Harrison.
Well, I don't think I was there for four hours.
Okay.
I would say I was there for two hours at best, and if, and I think that would be a more fair-
I appreciate your integrity. All right, so we'll move that, that it be moved from four hours on Mr. Harrison to two hours on Mr. Harrison, and then Ms. Carpenter-
You gotta get a medal for me.
And Ms. Carpenter, are your hours correct?
Yeah, I went, I was here all day.
Okay. Is it consent of the board that we put this on the consent agenda for next Monday night?
Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. So that's what we'll do on that. And one last thing before we adjourn, and that is, next Thursday, you know, we've got the District Six over in Shelby, and like to find out if anybody's interested in doing some carpooling to cut down on the expense. I don't know, I think all of the board members are gonna be going to District Six.
I'll be out of pain.
Okay, Ms. Car-
I'm gonna be in Raleigh.
Oh, that's right. Everybody else, I believe, is gonna be going, and maybe we could carpool, do two or three cars, instead of taking six or seven different cars. And so all I would ask is if, I don't mind driving, if somebody wants to ride with me, just let me know, and I'll pick you up, drop you off, and all that. And anybody else that wants to drive, talk to somebody.